Let's see if when it starts. Okay, so now the recording is in process. And we'll, we have four people in the quiz. You can join the quiz late if you want to. We'll start it on. It should be the quiz week four section. So many of these questions are ones that were from last week where people didn't answer them correctly. You know, we didn't get a large population. If we get everybody knows the question, we'll, we won't use it the next week. Once again, it's on premise and then IPS. There's also this new container as a service, which that answer is in there now. I've seen this question for a while. I, I learned about this from the ACE Udemy class. And I, I use it periodically now. It's kind of a cool little tool. And it looks like we got 100% there, so we can take that off. That's good. I think this time we should get 100% on this one. This has been from week one as well. So one thing there, you can see it has an equals. Most of the ones that have equals have a dash, dash option. All right, very good. We got like 100% on that one. That's good. It's kind of a hackneyed question, but it's basically breaking down like the help page for the G Cloud stuff. This is a little tricky too. This is just saying, what's the order based upon what you see there? The easiest to use, hardest to use in terms of data transformation components from Google. Data prep is the one that uses a UI. Data flow is beam, flow, stream, beam. Data proc is Kubernetes with Spark, proc, spark. So here once again, ETL component supports batch and streaming. Batch and streaming, beam, beam is part of. Right? You know? There you go. Flow. Flow, streaming, beam, data flow. Data proc, you know, when you think of data proc, you think Spock, sport, spark. And spark has the SQL component where you can enter those commands interactively. It does R, you can, with R, you typically interactive SQL R proc. There you go. Flow has four. Just remember that. Four, F O U R, F L O W, four, Java, Python, Go, Scall. Pro, Cinco. Prox 5, R. Python, Java, you got it right there. I'm kind of telling you, sorry. There you go. 100%. Permissions are attached to roles. Roles are attached to identities. PRI, pri, I A M, PRI. You can make primary out of that. These are things like if you wanted to go directly to big query, how could you do it? Right? You can use Google Cloud Storage. You can choose Upload of a C V S, Google Drive, Big Table, or you can manually create it. You notice there's no dashes. If there were double dashes and equals, you could make it more than the minimal command. None of those have dashes there. This is the last question. It's only a new question for the week. So very good. Well, turns out we're gonna do a lab where we'll get some practice with that. Congratulations, all you guys. So with that said, it is 10:30, so what we're gonna do is we're gonna switch over and, and do a quick lab. Again, it, it comes from that list. And let's go ahead and switch over to that and hopefully it won't knock me out knock me out when I switch over to this. Let's see. Yep, go ahead. Alright, so what we'll do is I, I, I'll do this lab here. I'll show you how to, to do one. And we'll just step through it. And then if you want, you know, you could just do your own lab or you could follow along here. If you haven't done a lab before, this will be at least one that you could figure out. And then I'll just share the actual Google Cloud Console that I'm doing as. So once again, you, you typically you click on Start Lab. You're in an incognito window. Maybe you see up there. I'm gonna use my subscription. And I'm gonna open Google, Google Cloud Console. Let's say use another account. I'm gonna come here and copy the username. Go back and copy the password. And the only thing that I'll, I'll have is the project here, which we can get, but case it asked me, I already have it copied. I'm gonna drag this one over to the side just to make sure I'm doing what I'm supposed to be doing for this lab. So basically saying that you use cloud commands to do things. So we know that this is going to be in the cloud shell. We're gonna start that. Close this. They want you to start the lab. They want to talk to you about regions. Once again, regions and zones. So regions. Things owns. R before Z. Zones are the subset. So US East One, that's a region. US East One. B is a zone. Talking about things live in particular zones. He is, he's asking, what's your default region? So one of the things is, we'll go ahead and put the command here. He's saying, do this based upon your project. Here. As well. See what he's showing. And these are for the compute resources. So I think this is like, I think we did the command for what was the default setup for compute? Yeah, I know this, this is GCal Compute Info Described. So he's describing the project for the compute instances. These are kind of the setup. All the defaults. So he's saying. So let's see if we can grab for default there. So we have the Google Compute Default Zone and Default Region. See if we can do this. So we know, I don't know if this will work or not. And so you know, you can do GCloud. And big. Get value. Let's see. Google. Compute. Default. Zone. So maybe you have to do, that's on the core. Maybe you have to do that from like compute. I don't know how to do that. Does anybody know how to do that? Value. Do this, do a help on this. See if there's a specify something other than other than the default. Okay, so it has section property. Okay. Let's do that. Section property. Compute. Section slash properties. Okay. Compute has no. It seems odd because it seems like it should have it. If you have any clues, speak up. If you're, if you're muted, you'll have to unlike. Do this for a second. Go back. So info about how to do this. So this compute.
Hi, sorry.
Hey, how are you?
Hi, good morning, everyone. Well, I just went to the, I, I Google it. And I found that we use, I mean, this is from the official documentation. We need to, I, I shared the command in the chat.
Say again. Let me, you may look at the chat and see. Okay, let me look. So I don't see it in the Slack channel. You're talking about.
Yeah, that one, this is from the, we need to share the link.
Okay, gotcha. Right here?
Yes.
Yeah, so let's see what you got. Let's copy that. So we were trying to get the default compute zone. Let's see what you got here. You're getting the project ID.
But we need to replace the project ID with, with the one we are using.
Uh, yeah, yeah. So all, all I was trying to say is in this lab, they were talking about how to get your defaults from the from this. Or pardon me. He was saying like, do this GCloud Compute Project Info Describe. And then he was specifying the project that, that command you posted there. That do that again. Has no property default zone. I think unless maybe I did this wrong. Which one? Let me, let me paste what you put. Yeah, so that is the API is not enabled. Let's try it. Yeah, so let's enable the API. Because this is a quick lab, we can't enable that. But that's a good one. Let me, uh, let me save that. And we'll, I'll look at it later. I appreciate it. That's cool. Let's put this. Let me save it here. I'll save it in this thing. And then the other one, what we were trying to do was he had this. We're trying to get the default zone. Save that for later. Alright, never mind. Let's just go ahead and go down what they can enable us to do. So he talks about setting environment variables. So one of the things that they do here is they do, they want you to do this. And you see this like a gazillion times, but you see that on the, um, the, the quiz question as well that do like so. Clear this. Let's see if it'll work. The value. Project. Alright, so you can do that to get the project. So this guy up here, instead of doing the the export, literally. And then the export part is just saying what, uh, you're gonna export this to all shells. It's variable. This is how you print it. Like some people familiar with Bash. The next thing he's saying, export your, he's wanting to do this. And that was why I was trying to do the other command, which sadly won't work. So let's see what the zone is. By just getting the result. Wonder if you could do this. That would work. Uh, it's gonna be on the next line, so we need to be able to grab that. I'll save this for, I'll play with it later. We did the zone part and they verify that your variables were set correctly. Yeah. And then he's wanting you to create a compute instance. So one of the things kind of here to note is all of these, this is the minimal, right? You don't need, these are optional. The options are for the zone and for what type it is. And he's got the name, but I think you can do this without the name. So let's do this. You may have to add a name. Okay. Yeah, instance names must be specified. Okay. Alright. We'll, uh, we'll do this as X. Make sure we don't do this. So that's the minimal. Hopefully, uh, have that specified right. And this is not the zone. Did you mean zone? Yeah, yeah. So that's the default. So it looks like he's gonna take that. Let's just go ahead and do Ctrl C and not do it. Alright, and using the zone, using the right machine type, yada, yada, yada. For the check. For the check. Then uh. So make sure we didn't create two. I don't think we had time to do it. Oh, we did. Alright. Let's see for memory if we can stop. We want to do two X. So we don't get like too many instances. Get into a problem with that. Alright, so let's at least click the check my progress. We definitely got that done. And then he's like showing you how to do help. I will do help on this. It's interesting. So a lot of times I do help like this. Trying to figure it out. Good to know you can do the dash dash help. On the command. So if you go all the way to the end, you can put the help on delete. But it looks like you can do it this way as well. Benefit of doing these older labs. Just good. Save both of these just for. Reference. Alright, and then they talk about using. Some other help commands here. Gcloud dash H. And then it looks like that's like any command, right? And then dash dash help. Or verbose. And then things like config. I was asking in Stack Overflow how to to do this so that you don't have that pager. That's the only way I know how to do it is like that. Seems like you would use one of those options to say like. Oh, cue or something. Don't show me any help. Don't show me a pager. Alright. Yeah, and then he mentions that gcloud. Help config. That's equivalent to. Gcloud. Fig dash dash help. So I, I didn't even know that until I was doing this, that you can put that dash dash help at the end. So you don't have to go back and retype trying to find out where the help can come up. Alright, view. The list, view the list of configurations for your environment. Probably go through the pager. Config list. So. So here's what I was saying for. You've got the different pieces. So like the compute. I thought we would have like a default zone set for compute. But we don't. Let's do this thing where we list all of them. So like, these are basically like all the commands or not commands, microservices, different pieces of Google Cloud. All of the different config settings you can set for them. So this is cool. Let's look into compute. Yeah, so see. Zone. That's composer. Whereas compute, compute here. Has a zone property and a region for defaults that we haven't set, which that is like different from zones of other components. And that was really what I was going to try and show you there at the beginning. So like data proc, right? He's going to have a different default region than compute is. Functions, cloud functions, same way. It's a good thing to save off. List your components. I think these are the installed components of the gcloud commands. That's what he's trying to say. So the. Saying the latest version of of this gcloud SDK is 299. We've got that. For the things that are installed, we've got uh. Co control commands. We've got the beta commands installed. Uh, we've got the stuff using the PubSub emulator. I would think that we would have PubSub itself there. I thought maybe like there was like a separate PubSub command, but I guess PubSub emulator is that. Uh, we see functions for cloud functions. Functions. I don't see it. Anything over here say cloud function? No. Alright. Interesting. I don't know what scaffold is. Uh, this is something to do with clusters. Or running dockers, container as a service, right? Anthos is the new thing. Don't anything about that. Don't know what capital K customize is. Don't know what KPT is. Uh, App Engine Go extensions. I don't know. Other than it's probably go for App Engine. That was interesting. Look, I recently read that you can use App Engine for Go now. It's not just Java and Python. Or um. What is it? JavaScript and Python. So I mean, it's probably been out for a long time. I just didn't know about it. Alright, so let's see auto completion. Uh, yeah. Okay, and then he wants you to install the beta components. But let's see, he's wanting you to install beta, but I thought that we saw beta. Components is already installed. Yeah, so it's already there. So when I'm going to do that. But this is something kind of cool that I I put on that test question because I hadn't. Seen it before. This was like question 20. There we go, finally. So now gcloud. Compute. So you see, it's like you've, it's not just tab ahead. You can literally like go through and you've got the help screen there. It is F2 toggles that off. So there's with it toggled off. There's what it toggled on. Instances. Gcloud. Compute. Instances. Instances. Now it's going to be in something like list, right? The help for the different things along the way. Yeah. Alright, if you hit it like that, it'll toggle off. If not, I think you hit like the F9. Let's see, we'll see if it comes back. F9, yeah. Just quit it. Quit. There we go. He wanted you to. Do a instances describe. And then our VM, do it. Look for, yeah, so there we go. So now hitting tab, it knows what our VM is. Oh, yeah. Did we delete it already? Alright, so there it is. Why did this not work? Name of the instance is to describe. It's a new US central 1A. Maybe we picked the wrong zone. Uh, so that's like our default zone is wrong. Did you mean? No. Okay, that's what it was. We had the wrong default there. So, yeah. Auto delete's true. It's a compute instance. Alright, F9. Uh, we want to SSH into your instance. So we're in the shell here and we're going to go from this into the actual compute instance that we created. Uh, so I guess he's generating key, yada, yada, yada. Alright, no passphrase. So we're there. So like, you can do all the, it said. All the things you normally do in Linux, CPU info. Yeah, got two product cores. Alright, type exit. Do the same thing here. Alright, now you're in the home directory. Uh, what they're wanting to show you here is that this is persistent across your logins. So uh. Let me show your bashrc file. Put this back over. So, you know, we pretty much just did this lab, gee, getting started with Google Cloud. Three basic ways to interact with the GCP services. You got the console, you got the command line interface. I would say client libraries. So that's that. So uh, that is all that we've, we've got scheduled. We've got an hour. So what I suggest now is I will turn off the uh. The recording and then just do your labs. If you have any questions with the labs, I'll. Check back in and, you know, help somebody else have a problem. If someone uh. Stop presenting. Stop recording.